May I have a motion to adjourn Regular Meeting Number 43?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Regular Meeting Number 45 will now come to order. May we please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we are honored to have Father Vince Nguyen, who is the parochial administrator of Saint Latifas and Corpus Christi. Welcome to council. Thank you.
Honored to be here and thank you for everything that you guys do for this great city. We pray: We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we see blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications we read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council? Councilmember Brown?
I just have a quick announcement. As a council member and as the Chair of the Finance Committee, one of my favorite things that I get to do is to work with our auditor, Megan Kilgore. And I wanted to turn the microphone over to her for a second to talk to us about another good year for the finances of the city of Columbus.
Thank you, Chair Brown. This afternoon, we received acknowledgement from the last of the three rating agencies, which was Moody's, that we have received a AAA from all three again, which is a great continuation. This year, we spent a lot of time talking with Moody's in particular, and I'd love a chance to sit down with counsel at a later date. Chair Brown was in each of the meetings. I think Council President Harden, you were in some. And our finance director, Joe Lombardi, and his team, much acknowledgement goes to them too for having to respond. When you're working with the rating agencies, things happen so quickly. You have to respond oftentimes late into the evenings. And so, pretty much every night last week, the teams from both the Auditor's Office and Finance were responding to questions. And it is difficult, you know, being a large city in the United States with a large rapidly growing population, we have large capital needs. And so, part of our duty was to really spend time educating the rating agencies on what we are doing really well and help them understand the challenges that we do have and how we are trying to address them. So, thank you for that. And very sincerely, thanks to your team and to Finance Director Lombardi's team.
Thank you, Auditor. I know that it took a lot of people from the administration, as well as from your team, not only to tell the story of the city's finances, but to tell the story of our city in order to achieve those ratings. It isn't actually a simple math problem. There's a lot more that goes into it. And I know that there were a lot of people, again, on all respective teams that worked for this, but I have to say, the leadership of you, Auditor Kilgore, was just indispensable to the result. So, thank you for that. And I think that's some happy news to start the meeting off with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown. Councilmember Mitch Brown. Thank you, Councilmember Reamie.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I'd like to invite Malik Moore to the podium as I introduce Resolution 0267-X-2018 to honor, recognize, and celebrate Welcoming Week 2018. Welcoming Week takes place September 14th through 23rd this year, and it recognizes the growing movement of communities that fully embrace new Americans and their contributions to the social fabric of our country. This annual celebration brings thousands of people together during a series of local and global events to celebrate the contributions of immigrants and refugees and the role each community's play in fostering a greater welcome. Efforts that promote understanding and collaboration between all members of our community are crucial in encouraging and preserving the welcoming and inclusive nature, environment of our great city. The city of Columbus has been recognized as a hospitable and collaborative place where individuals, families, and institutions thrive, and the contributions of all are celebrated and valued. Here in Columbus, we take great pride in fostering a welcoming environment for all individuals regardless of race, ethnicity, or place of origin. We believe our welcoming stature will enhance the cultural fabric and overall prosperity for current and future generations in the city of Columbus. Malik, the floor is yours.
I just want to thank each one of you for your leadership, your accessibility, and your vision that allows the YMCA to work to engage our new American neighbors and create a community that's connected and reflective of all the many voices, fabrics, and makeups of each of our neighborhoods. And so, this is an honor and on behalf of the YMCA, on behalf of the new American communities, I'm grateful to live in a city that is as smart and open and future-looking as Columbus. Thank you.
If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. Thank you, Councilmember Reamie. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. I do have one announcement. President Protem Stenziano and I will host our final Courthouse to the Community event on Tuesday, October 2nd, at 5:30 PM at Gilly Recreation Center, which is located at 2100 Morse Road. We just want to invite everyone to come out. The court will be there, as well as various legal services that are provided to our residents at free of charge. So, definitely mark your calendars. Again, that's Tuesday, October 2nd, at 5:30 PM at Gilly Recreation Center. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council President Protem.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyson.
Yes, I have a resolution, but before I read the resolution, I would like to just read a statement that this week, our city lost a community advocate who worked tirelessly to feed others. Patrick Kaufman, an Air Force veteran and married father of three, passed away last Thursday after a 10-month fight with stage IV melanoma. He was committed to bringing healthy food to the people who needed it most. He helped transform a small plot of land used for a community garden into what is now known as Franklinton Farms. This two acres of scattered plots produces thousands of pounds of vegetables, including tomatoes, corn, kale, spinach, eggplant, zucchini, and other vegetables every year. Professionally, Paul worked as a project coordinator at Franklinton Farms as the Food and Wellness Initiative at the Methodist Theological School in Ohio, which is a seminary in Delaware. So, we'll just take a few minutes in silence to think about Paul and his family, Patrick and his family. Thank you. My resolution is 0271-X-2018, and I'm going to ask for Ann Womack, who was certainly one of our great commissioners, but I'm also going to ask Ms. Gwendolyn Macon Beck to walk to the podium. And if she wants to have any of her family members come up with her, and her pastor I know is here, they're welcome to come up to the podium also. I'm sorry. And this resolution is to recognize September as Sickle Cell Month in the city of Columbus and to support the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association in their efforts to educate, advocate, and support individuals and families affected by the sickle cell disease. Where sickle cell disease is an inherited blood disorder that affects nearly 100,000 people in the United States, sickle cell disease causes red blood cells to form in a crescent shape like a sickle. Sickle cells live only 10 to 20 days instead of the normal 120 days of regular blood cells. The damaged sickle cells may cause serious problems, including restricted blood flow, tissue and organ damage, prolonged episodes of intense physical pain, stroke, blindness, vision problems, and increased susceptibility to infection. Whereas sickle cell disease is particularly common among those whose ancestors have come from Sub-Saharan Africa, Spanish-speaking regions in the Western Hemisphere, South America, the Caribbean, Central America, Saudi Arabia, India, and the Mediterranean countries such as Turkey, Greece, and Italy. Whereas one out of every 365 African-American children are born with the sickle cell disease. And whereas the Ohio Sickle Cell Association was incorporated in 1977 and was originally established for the purpose of providing payment mechanisms for medically indigent adults with sickle cell disease. And whereas the mission of the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association is to provide education, advocacy, and statewide support to individuals and families affected by the sickle cell disease. This is achieved by focusing on education, testing, counseling, providing referrals, support, and various advocacy initiatives. Whereas sickle cell disease has been recognized as a global health priority with international resolutions being passed by the African Union and UNESCO in 2005, the World Health Organization in 2006, and United Nations in 2008. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, this council is hereby recognized September as Sickle Cell Month in the city of Columbus, and it will be further resolved as council supports the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association for its efforts to educate, advocate, and support individuals and families affected by sickle cell disease. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And thank you. I also want to recognize an individual, and she'll speak too, with Ms. Womack, is Ms. Gwendolyn Macon Beck. She was born in Jamaica and educated in London, England, as a nurse. She also attended the University of Buffalo and the Ohio State University. Ms. Macon Beck began working with the East Side Central Citizen Organization, Echo Family Health Center, as a volunteer in 1969 as a nurse educator. While working as a nurse at Mount Carmel Hospital, during her time at Echo, they were awarded federal funding to provide sickle cell disease services in 1974. She joined the sickle cell program at Echo Family Health Center and was employed as a registered nurse and outreach coordinator, and then later functioned as the Director of Sickle Cell at Echo. In the beginning of her career, she's primary duties were working with individuals in sickle cell, was responsible identifying schools, churches, community agencies who come in contact with sickle cell patients. And so, I just wanted to recognize that since the '70s, she has been such an advocate, working with families, educators, to inform people about this disease. And so, I want to now turn the floor over to one, Ms. Annie Womack, and who serves as President of the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association, and then Ms. Beck. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden, Councilwoman Tyson. It is indeed an honor to be here. In my day job, because I think the people back there are shocked that I have three jobs, but I am charged to run the entire state of Ohio, all 88 counties, to do education, advocacy, and outreach for sickle cell disease, trait, and other hemoglobin blood disorders. So, a famous person once said that if you have a lot to say, you start at the end. So, at the end of it all, had it not been for this young woman behind me, who has been an employee for 44 years, working for the state of Ohio, locally here in Columbus, and I really don't have that much to say, but had that had been for her, I would not be standing here. So, I stand on broad shoulders. We recently lost our Board Chair, Ms. Edward McNabb, in a couple weeks, well, last month, and so that hit us hard. So, we are working together to provide those services, but it's women like Ms. Gwendolyn Macon Beck that I stand on their shoulders. And so, I just present her to you because after 44 years of being on the ground, and she's still there, because I won't let her leave. So, she's one of the people that will ever be there until she walks away, but I delay that every time I can. I cry begging still to keep her there. So, Ms. Gwendolyn Macon Beck, 44 years on the sickle cell forefront.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, for having me here. Tremendous privilege for me to be among such distinguished public servants. And I want to say thank you to my boss here, also for bringing me here. And also, thank you to my support system. Now, in the sickle cell business and healthcare, support system is of paramount importance. And so, here's my two pastors from my church. I belong to the Seventh-day Adventist Church, Central Seventh-day Adventist Church, and my two daughters here, and my son over here. They're all here to support me this evening. I thank you so much for this privilege to share a moment with you as I stand in gap for thousands of families struggling with sickle cell disease. I'm privileged to stand in the gap for them. It's been a long journey because sickle cell was discovered in 1910, and it's now 2018, and we have not gone. We've not really, really gotten too far yet. And so, I thank you for this honor this evening, and I will accept it on behalf of all the families that are still struggling with sickle cell disease. God bless you. To God be the glory.
And to Ms. Beck and to Ms. Womack, I really thank you for your leadership. This is an important month, one in which many families really do appreciate the work that you have certainly been doing for 44 years. And for Ann, and most people know that I have a son that has sickle cell disease, who next week will be 36 years old. And so, I am so thankful and so blessed that, and for the last 13 months, has not been in the hospital, which was, we've been there a lot. So, I also last week had the opportunity to go to New York and with a lot of advocates from across this country that are focused on this disease. And it was access to care, so from doctors from California to New York and all in between, that people like yourself, people that are focused on this disease, and I know that we've got a lot of work to do, but some improvements have been made, and we'll just continue the fight. And we know at some point, there will be a cure for this illness that certainly affects so many people of color. And so, thank you for your ongoing leadership, and just appreciate you caring for our families. Thank you. And I have an announcement that, starting tomorrow, we will begin our listening sessions for the Commission on Black Girls. And our first session will be tomorrow at Columbus Public Health. The first group that will be presenting will be individuals that work with our girls. So, it will be the service providers, starting at 10 o'clock, will come in and share their experiences in answering two questions. What's the current quality of life for black girls that are in their program, and what can the community do to improve the quality of life? Later that evening, from 6 to 8, at the Health Department, we will hear from parents and caregivers. And then, next, September 27th, we'll also be at the Health Department from 6 to 8, and we'll have a girl session, and we'll be hearing from our girls. Again, the girls are from 11 until 22. And if you are a service provider, please come out tomorrow from 10, starting at 10. If you're a parent or caregiver of a black girl from 11 until 22, please come to the Health Department from 6 to 8. And then, next week, the girl session will be September 27th. You are a girl, and a parent, the girls, or if you're a young adult, from 6 to 8, to come and share your story. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Thank you for your leadership on the Black Girls Commission. It's really important conversation in our community. Lastly, but certainly not least, I have Resolution 0263-X-2018, and it's to honor and recognize Mr. Bob Wyler Company on the occasion of their 80th anniversary. And so, as I speak about the company, I invite Mr. Wyler, and I see Skip here as well, to come forward. The Wyler Company has been in shaping central Ohio, beginning with the development of retail centers and homes in the 1930s to current developments such as Polaris Commerce Center. In addition to what they have built, this family's contribution to arts and culture and philanthropy in Columbus has been immense. And so, I won't read everything in your 80-year history and giving back to our community that's in this resolution, but on behalf of my colleagues and on behalf of a grateful city for your engagement over the many, many years, I wanted to say congratulations and ask if any of my colleagues will have any comments. Mr. Reamie, come forward, Mr. Wyler.
Thank you so much. It's a real honor to have you down here this evening and thinking back of all the services you've committed to this community over the years, Dr. Wyler, such as serving on our school board and all the philanthropic things that you continue to do for this city. Thank you so much for all that you've done, and we are so appreciative to have you right here in Columbus.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you so much for 80 years, as Council President said, of giving back to Columbus. One of my favorite things about having conversations with you, Mr. Wyler, is, first of all, you never let me call you Mr. Wyler. You always say Bob. But second of all, I'll say, what about, you know, this idea that we're batting around, or this possible reform, or, you know, something kind of equity-based or based in the drive towards eliminating poverty? And you'll look at me and say, I think that's a good idea. I've been talking about that for 20 years. And you are always, you're always thinking ahead of our time and always thinking about how to make the city better. So, thank you.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. I just want to say thank you. Simply thank you. To be able to have a business for 80 years takes a lot of blood, sweat, and tears. And I thank your family for allowing you to do this work. I see Skip sitting right next to you. I thank Missy for allowing you to have the ability to do this work. So, I want to say thank you to you, Bob, and thank you to your family. And Columbus is a much better place because of you and your work. Thank you.
Certainly. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wyler.
You're all very nice. Thank you all, Council President Harden, and for each of you, Councilmembers. I say I'm fortunate enough to know each of you, and I will say, without trying to kiss up to you, we have a very strong city council. And if it weren't for the strong city government that we have, we wouldn't be celebrating our 80th year. And I know I speak for Skip, who's third generation, started by my dad. Throughout the years, it's been a strong public-private partnership, and I think that's one of the reasons I'm so proud to be part of Columbus, is we have a city government that we can all say is one that we are extremely honored and proud to be part of. And it's a public-private partnership that makes this city move forward. And thank you, Councilwoman Brown, for telling everyone that I either like or don't like your ideas. I'm not right all the time, I know that. But I think you all know I have one idea coming up, and I can't resist this opportunity to tell you that I hope I live long enough that we can all hop on a Cota bus and be rider free. I hope that happens during my lifetime. And so, I know I'm not here to speak on that behalf, but thank you all very much. We certainly appreciate it, and we thank you for all you've done for us.
Thank you and congratulations. With that, can I get a, oh, I apologize. Skip?
Thanks.
Can I get a motion? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. Are there any comments by our elected officials or members of the administration, the city attorney, or city auditor?
I'll be brief. This coming Wednesday, we have a kind of a special program that we're trying to do. You know, it's been since really the late 1970s, early 80s, since we've made an effort as a city to try and provide the opportunity to buy bonds issued by the city of Columbus to local investors, i.e. our citizens. And so, we've been working a lot to try and figure out, how can we do a better job of that, allowing our citizens to be able to invest in their city, to be able to take ownership in their assets from which they benefit, and really help, you know, create some additional, I think, awareness as to the types of projects that the city of Columbus does. And so, this Wednesday, I'll be sending out information to each of your teams, each of your offices. The program is called Invest in Us, with the play on the words "us," you know, in Columbus, as we logo it and so forth. And the denominations are also going to be brought down. Typically, municipal bonds are issued in denominations of 5,000 because they're typically made for investment by the big firms on Wall Street and so forth. But this is an opportunity, we're just trying to draw, again, bringing it down to a lower level where citizens can be involved. We've established relationships with, we basically canvassed a variety of brokerage firms across the central Ohio area and tried to figure out where a majority of the accounts were held. And so, if you have a brokerage account with one of about, oh, I don't know, about 14 firms, it's all very easy. You just have to pick up the phone, call your broker, and it's done. We've also, through Councilmember Brown's suggestion, worked with our credit union here at the city. They're not a traditional brokerage firm, but they do have an affiliate. And so, that is going to work out, where they're trying to, you know, really link better to the actual, you know, boots-on-the-ground community. So, we'll keep you posted. I'll send out a lot of information this week. We're going to start some campaign as well to try and educate citizens on how they can buy bonds. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Auditor, for your leadership in that exciting program. City Attorney's Office. I know that we have, we had representatives from NEAC, who's here, and Ms. Womack. I see folks from the Far South Area Commission, but I hear that folks from Greater Southeast Area Commission would like to make a presentation. No, they're not here. All right, well, that's perfect. Not perfect, but. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance and numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee, ordinance is 2253, 2293, 2304, 2307, 2359.
Finance Committee, ordinance is 2253, 2293, 2304, 2307, 2359, 2364, 2394, 2411, and 2440-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 1964-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 2234 and 2388-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee, ordinance is 2442, 2445, 2446, 2492, 2516-2018. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2065, 2098, 2280, 2283, 2284, 2290, 2294, 2295, 2298, 2309, 2310, 2311, 2316, 2330, 2331, 2356, and 2383-2018. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 2165-2018. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance 2539-2018. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 2507, 2530, 2026, and 2373-2018.
The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinance into the record?
Resolutions of Expression, 257 and 262X-2018, 259X, 260X, 264, 265, 268, 269, 270, 250, 251, 252, and 254, 261. Sorry, that's in a different committee. So that ends the Resolution of Expression. Then in Finance Committee, first is a resolution, 261X-2018, ordinance is 2010, 2164, 2254, 2345, 2371, 2375, 2415, 2417, 2444, and 2451-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 2318-2018. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is 2317, 2344, 2419-2018. Veterans Affairs Committee, ordinance 2454-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee, resolutions 246 and 247X-2018, ordinance is 1217, 2148, 2338, 2366-2018. Administration Committee, ordinance 2264-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee, resolution 248X-2018, ordinance is 2428, 2429-2018. Housing Committee, ordinance is 2321, 2322, 2323, 2324, 2350, 2351, 2352, 2353, 2423, 2424, 2425, 2426-2018. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance 2346 and 2347-2018. Technology Committee, ordinance 2315-2018. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2168, 2169, 2288, 2299, and 2326-2018. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 2247, 2339, and 2447-2018. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance 2449-2018. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0172, 173, 241, 242, 243, 244, 245, 246, 247, 248, 249, 250, 251, 252, 253, and 254-2018.
We have one speaker on the consent agenda, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Mr. Wilkins is speaking on ordinance 2352 in the Development Department.
Nathaniel George Wilkins, chairman, sole of vacant property in the North London area. I'm now speaking in favor of, I'm speaking against of 2352, 2018, 1260 East 23rd. I'm against this for two reasons, is because I don't know how long the property has been vacant and abandoned on 23rd Avenue. And the second idea, you know, I'm against this because I don't want any property to be priced too high to be rehabbed or fixed up. I feel like if this property has been holding a land bank for somebody to purchase this property to be fixed and rehabbed, and I feel like it's going to be too much high for rental for anybody to live in this property. So again, I just would like to have more information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director, is, this seems to be a pretty regular conveyance of land out of the land bank. Is there anything you can tell us about the process specific to this piece of legislation, this piece of partial?
Thank you, President Hardin, and members of council. All of our sales go through an application process where the buyer must show financial ability to not only acquire the property but rehab the property. While I don't have the specifics of this sale, all of our properties do go through that vetting process. So we're confident that a buyer has the demonstrated ability to financially take on this project.
If Mr. Wilkins had any specific questions, would you please follow up with him with that information?
Absolutely.
Seeing no further questions or comments from my colleagues, may I get a motion to move forward with items as needed as, as, thank you. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
The ordinances are passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day entailed legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown is the chair. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Hardin. First, in finance tonight, we have ordinance 2032-2018 to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Fleet Management Division to establish purchase orders with Cooper North America and the Dexter Company for the purchase of aftermarket snow plow parts and to authorize the expenditure of $90,111.30 from the Fleet Management Operating Fund. This bid was processed in accordance with the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code. Four bids were received and opened in July. Cooper North America and the Dexter Company were deemed the lowest responsive and responsible bidders. Director Lombardi, do you want to explain the need to amend to emergency?
Unfortunately, winter is just around the corner, and to be able to stock up on the parts and to get the trucks and plows ready for hopefully not a bad winter, we would like to get those parts ordered as soon as we can and into our inventory so we can begin to repair and to have them during the season.
Great, thank you. I'd like to move to, if I see no questions, like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk?
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Amended.
I'd like to move to amend to emergency.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Amended to emergency.
And finally, I move for passage as amended.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2213 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase long-distance communication services with AT&amp;T, to authorize the expenditure of $1 from general budget reservation, BRPO 000978, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code and to declare an emergency. I'd like to request to table this for one week.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Table.
Next, we have ordinance 2282-2018 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish a universal term contract for the option to purchase distribution transformers and secondary network protectors with Wesco Distribution Incorporated, to authorize the expenditure of $1 from general budget reservation, BRPO 000978, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code and to declare an emergency. The division of power is the primary user of distribution transformers for the city's electric distribution system. The term of this contract is two years with the option to renew for two additional years, and the total estimated annual expenditure is $500,000. Director Lombardi, can you explain the bidding process for the contract and need to waive competitive bidding?
Sure. Thank you, President Hardin, Councilmember Brown, other council members. Wesco submitted a bid that had three manufacturers. Their first manufacturer was Central Maloney. They quoted an item that had aluminum coil. The bid specifications asked for copper coil. The other two manufacturers that they quoted did meet our specifications. However, they had terms and conditions that were in conflict with the City of Columbus's terms and conditions. So we negotiated new terms and conditions, and because of that, we have to waive the competitive bidding process.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Thank you. These next 10 ordinances authorize Auditor Megan Kilgore to issue and sell bonds to fund the projects considered and approved by council in this year's capital budget. I want to thank Mayor Ginther, Auditor Kilgore, Director Lombardi, and the directors of each and every department for working with this council on an ongoing basis for months to get to this point. The capital budget can appear each year to be just long lists and charts with big numbers, major financing mechanisms, and a lot of technical steps along the way. But it shouldn't be lost that these dollars represent major investments in Columbus neighborhoods. Everything from repaving roads to updating our recreation and park facilities, to building new police and fire stations, to maintaining and updating our sewer and water systems is included. These dollars and projects make a substantial impact on quality of life for our residents. In light of that, I especially want to thank the residents and community leaders who attended the series of neighborhood public meetings we held in April throughout the city to receive feedback directly from people in their own neighborhoods on their local priorities. I also want to thank Councilmember Emanuel Remy, who stepped in to chair the fourth hearing after I went into labor. And my newborn son was just not keen on showing up to a capital budget hearing in Linden when he was 24 hours old. So thank you, Councilmember Remy. This feedback is a vital part of making these investments. And although we are just wrapping up this year's capital budget with the bond sales being authorized tonight, the process of working with our area commissions and neighborhoods to gather feedback for next year's budget is just beginning. Auditor Kilgore, Director Lombardi, anything to add? All right, I'm going to read 10 ordinances. Get ready. Ordinance 2430-2018 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $20,875,000 for public safety and health-related projects, Section 441B of the city charter. I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row. I have to waive second reading, sorry.
On each one? I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waived.
And I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Next, ordinance 2431-2018 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $53,110,000 for recreation and park-related projects, Section 441B of the city charter. I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waive.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Next, ordinance. Director, I know, Director Lombardi, what's going on with the lights here?
I'm not sure, but good thing you're passing those capital budget dollars right now.
Ordinance 2432-2018 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $158,950,000 for transportation and refuse projects, Section 441B of the city charter. I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Ordinance 2433-2018 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $55,250,000 for sanitary sewer-related projects, Section 441B of the city charter. I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Ordinance 2434-2018 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $56,410,000 for water, storm, and power projects, Section 441B of the city charter. I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waive.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Ordinance 2435-2018 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $19,595,000 for public utilities, Section 441B of the city charter. I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waived.
Move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Ordinance 2436-2018 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $3 million for the Office of the City Auditor projects, Section 441B of the city charter. Move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waive.
Move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Ordinance 2437-2018 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $17,985,000 for economic and community development projects, Section 441B of the city charter. Move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waive.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Ordinance 2438-2018 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $7,310,000 for construction management projects, Section 441B of the city charter. I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waive.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
Ordinance 2439-2018 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $7,760,000 for information services projects, Section 441B of the city charter. I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
And then finally, in finance tonight, I'd like to move back to first reading on page three to read ordinance 2253-2018 to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds between projects within the safety voted bond fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Roger D. Fields and Associates for professional engineering services, and to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the safety voted bond fund. The Office of Construction Management solicited RFPs for professional engineering services on the vendor services website from May to June of this year. The city received three responses, and Roger D. Fields and Associates was recommended for the bid award after receiving the highest score from an evaluation committee. I'd like to move to waive second reading on this piece.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Waive.
I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Passed.
That is all I have in finance.
Thank you so much. We'll now move to the Recreation and Parks Committee, where Councilmember Page will read a piece of ordinance.
Thank you, President Hardin. This evening in Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 2385-2018 to authorize a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $15,296,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund to the Recreation and Parks Department for the operation of various grant programs administered by the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging and to declare an emergency. I am co-sponsoring this piece of legislation with President Protem Stenziano and the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging plans, funds, and delivers services that help older adults and individuals with disabilities remain safe and independent in their homes. This funding will continue to support those many projects, and CLAA is operated under the City of Columbus Recreation and Parks Department. There are no questions or comments from my colleagues. I move for passage by voice.
Second.
Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance passed.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all we have in Recreation and Parks this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. This committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight I have our ordinance number 1989-2018 to amend the 2018 capital improvements budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to pay utility relocation costs to various utilities for the roadway improvements Livingston Avenue, Phase C, Fifth Street to Kennedy Drive project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,182,999 for utility relocations for this project from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes payment for utility relocation work by American Electric Power, AT&amp;T, Spectrum, also known as Time Warner, Windstream, and other utilities as needed in an amount up to $2,182,999. The Department of Public Service is engaged in the roadway improvements Livingston Avenue, Phase C, Fifth Street to Kennedy Drive project. Project improvements include roadway reconstruction, bike lanes, sidewalks, street trees, drainage, waterline improvements, replacement of traffic signals, and relocating overhead utilities underground. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
I'd also like to take this moment to remind everyone that I will be hosting a public hearing here in chambers tomorrow afternoon, Tuesday, September 18th, from 4:00 to 5:30 as Chair of the Public Service and Transportation Committee on Title 21 Code Revisions and Shared Mobility Devices, also known as scooters. Public testimony is welcome, and we ask that you please fill out speaker slips by 4:00 p.m. tomorrow afternoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Remy. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Councilmember?
Floor is yours.
Thank you. I have ordinance 2308-2018 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept reproductive health and wellness program grant from the Ohio Department of Health to authorize the appropriation of $939,064 in grant money and fee revenues from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The Women's Health and Wellness Center at Columbus Public Health provides reproductive health services for men, for women, men, teens, and particularly residents that are low-income and without health insurance. These services include a special focus on providing healthy, highly effective, and long-term birth control methods as part of our overall strategy to promote safe birth spacing and support infant mortality reduction strategies. Columbus Public Health serves as the lead agency in Franklin County for this program. Women's Health serves a diverse group of community residents comprised of those ages 25 through 29, African-American or Hispanic, and with three-fourths at 100% or less of a federal poverty level. In 2017, 3,998 patient visits were completed at Columbus Public Health, which represents a 40% increase over the 2016 visit totals. Furthermore, the Women's Health and Wellness Center staff initiated services to women in recovery at Comp Drug in February of 2018 as part of the collaboration with the Ohio Better Birth Outcomes. In June of 2018, Women's Health partnered with Ohio Health and the Franklin County Municipal Court to provide ongoing reproductive health education and services to victims of human trafficking. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2328-2018 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Women, Infants, and Children, the WIC program, in the amount of $6,868,081 to authorize the appropriation of $6,868,081 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. WIC is a special supplement nutrition program for women, infants, and children. This program serves to safeguard the health of low-income pregnant, postpartum, and breastfeeding women, infants, and children up to age five who are at a nutritional risk by providing nutritious foods and information on healthy eating, including breastfeeding promotion and support, and refers to the healthcare and other social services. Franklin County WIC serves 32,097 clients at 15 locations throughout the city. Columbus Public Health operates nine locations, and Nationwide Children's Hospital operates six locations Monday through Friday. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number 2329-2018 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Ohio Buckles Buckeye Grant Program in the amount of $55,000 to authorize the appropriation of $55,000 to the Health Department and the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. This program is through Columbus Public Health. It is the Occupant Protection Regional Coordination Grant, supports statewide network of child-passenger safety program known as the Ohio Buckles Buckeyes. The Ohio Occupant Protection Regional Coordinator serve as regional liaisons between the Ohio Department of Health and county-level contracts at OBB sites. This grant supports the regional coordinators as they work with the local OBB sites to educate parents, lower child occupant protection misuse rates in Ohio, provide community resources, especially to those underserved in high-risk communities, and provide appropriate car seats to families that qualify under the WIC federal guidelines. Columbus Public Health is the regional coordinator for Region Five, which includes Franklin County and 11 and 13 surrounding counties. And last year, Columbus Public Health distributed 75 to 100 OBB child safety seats to the Columbus Public Health Car Seat Program. And this ordinance is co-sponsored by President Protem Stenziano. He has certainly been an advocate for car seats in this community. And the final ordinance in my, in this Health and Human Services Committee, move for passage, I'm sorry.
Second.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The final ordinance in this, in my committee is ordinance 2333-2018 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of $285,000 for the Moms and Babies First Black Infant Vitality Program, a culturally specific home visitation program that provides in-home, family-centered service, coordination, and education services to high-risk, low-income African-American pregnant women and their infants, to age one, who reside in 14 specific ZIP codes, and to authorize the appropriation of the $258,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund. There are, this will serve 129 high-risk women, African-American women, and their infants, and they are those who reside in 14 ZIP codes, 03, 04, 05, 06, 07, 11, 15, 19, 22, 23, 24, 27, 29, and 32. If you have, for more information regarding this program, you can contact Kay Benick at Maternal Child Health at Columbus Public Health at 614-645-6714. And again, I just think, reading this particular ordinance and continuing thinking about infant mortality, that's why this, the Commission on Black Girls is so important, because we want to make sure that our black women are not continuing to stay and have low-income jobs, low-income salaries, and that we can help our girls to be able to, whatever the issues are that are keeping our, our black women in areas where they continue to have low-income wages, which doesn't help them to move forward, we need to be able to start that early, and that's the importance of this work that we're doing on our Commission on Black Girls. But with that, I move for passage.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Seeing that, this past last piece of legislation in our last committee, and there's no other business coming for council, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting number 46, five, is adjourned. We will take non-agenda speakers momentarily. Regular meeting number 46 will now come to order. Can the clerk please call a row?
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
Second.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I will briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speakers before, speaking before coming on council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side. And we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. The first ordinance is 2039-2018 is to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.035-R3 residential district and 3332.22-A1 building lines on corner lots, exceptions of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1297 Bryden Road, to permit a two-unit dwelling with reduced minimum side yard in R3 residential district. The applicant is Juliet Bullock. The proposed use is a two-unit dwelling. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval 10 to 0. First, I move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Waive.
Thank you. Now I move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And lastly, I move for passage.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2355-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3367.01-M2 manufacturing district of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 2180 Hardy Parkway Place to permit a trailer sales and service business in the M2 manufacturing district. The applicant is LRC Group LLC, care of Benjamin McDowell. The proposed use is trailer sales and service business. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Southwest Area Commission's recommendation is approval 7 to 0. First, I move to amend to emergency.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2357-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.035-R3 residential district, 3332.13-R3 area district requirements, and 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 633 Lindwood Avenue to permit, to permit two single-unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. The applicant is Michael P. Herman. The proposed use is two single-unit dwellings on one lot. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Livingston Area, Livingston Avenue Area Commission's recommendation is 502. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to move to waive second reading.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Pass. Or waive, I apologize.
Thank you. I move for passage.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Now pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3363-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039-R4 residential district and 3332.19 fronting of the City of Columbus Codes for the property located at 174 East Fourth Avenue to permit two, two-unit dwellings with reduced development standards in the R4 residential district. The applicant is David Betts. The proposed use is two, two-unit dwellings on one lot. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Italian Village Commission's recommendation is approval 5 to 0. And if there are no questions or comments, I first move to amend to emergency.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2372-2018 to rezone 2045 Polaris Parkway, being 3.23 acres located on the south side of Polaris Parkway, 650 feet east of Orion Place, from the LM Limited Manufacturing District to CPD Commercial Plan District. The applicant is the Witness Group, care of Jackson Reynolds III. The proposed use is hotel and extended stay hotel. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The Far North Columbus Communities Coalition's recommendation is approval 9 to 0. There are no questions or comments, I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Yeah, remove second reading.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2395-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.035-R3 permitted uses, 31, I mean, I'm sorry, 3312.49 minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3332.25 maximum side yards required, and 3332.26B minimum side yards permitted for the property located at 660 South Champion Avenue to conform a four-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. The applicant is Kyle Davis. The proposed use is to conform an existing four-unit dwelling. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Livingston Avenue Area Commission's recommendation is approval 601. If there are no questions or comments, I move to waive second reading.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Waive.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Please call a row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And the final ordinance in zoning this evening is 2422-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03-C4 permitted uses, 3312.11 drive-in stacking area, 3321.01 dumpster area, 3372.605B building design standards, and 3372.605C building design standards of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1319 West Fifth Avenue to permit a car washing facility with reduced development standards in the C4 commercial district. The applicant is Brad J. DeHayes from Connect Realty, care of Timothy Vachko. And the proposed use is car washing facility. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the, and the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission's recommendation is approval 7 to 0. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move to waive second reading.
Please call a row.
Thank you.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Waive.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Please call a row.